Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Burks?
Here.
Mr. Plomin?
Here.
Mr. Allie?
Here.
And we have a forum. Um, there will be no presentation. Uh, Department of Defense employee employer support the Guard Reserve. Angela was in Ferris State, um, when this, she had asked to come join us. Uh, she had made the time in her schedule. Uh, the special meeting caught her off guard, but I did want to give you more information that I have received and maybe have a better understanding as we're going through this. So at the national level, various presidents have signed a statement of support for Guard and Reserve as well as the cabinet members. Uh, the state level, all 50 governors have signed a statement of support. Additionally, many state of Michigan department directors have signed. At the county level, a number of county commissions have signed statements of support, including Kent County, Union County, Jackson County, Boone County, Compton County. Um, basically this is, uh, through the committee of the employer support the guard, the Department of Defense Agency tasked with the mission of gaining and maintaining employer support for those who serve the National Guard Reserve. They achieve their mission by one, encouraging employers to hire Guard Reserve members. Two, educating employers about the National Guard Reserve and their responsibilities as an employer. Three, recognizing supporters of employers. And four, resolving workplace conflicts related to military duty requirements. So I imagine that's much of what the presentation would have done. Uh, so I just wanted you guys to have that. So, uh, with that, we'll move to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
Aye.
We'll move to approval of the bills. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make the motion that we approve the bills listed as, and on the invoice edit report dated September 22nd, 2015, in the amount of $125,187.94. Invoice edit report dated September 29th, 2015, in the amount of $3,725.48. Invoice edit report, so, dated September 29th, 2015, in the amount of $1,149,989.23. Invoice edit report dated September 29th, 2015, in the amount of $368,594.21. Invoice edit report dated September 29th, 2015, in the amount of $720,792.91. Invoice edit report dated October 7th, 2015, in the amount of $110,689.19. Invoice edit report dated October 13th, 2015, in the amount of $4,000, oh, excuse me, Invoice edit report dated October 13th, 2015, in the amount of $423,511.10. Wire transfer dated September 21st, 2015, in the amount of $45,731.87. Wire transfer dated September 28th, 2015, in the amount of $146,907.50. Wire transfer dated September 28th, 2015, in the amount of $69,595. As provided by the First Office and authorized that warrants be drawn in the Treasury for same. And I now like to take another breath.
Support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Move to communications. Anybody have anything to add at this time? If not, we move to the opportunity for the public to address the board. Seeing none. Board of Commissioners, discussions? Uh, committee reports, we're gonna do a little different today. Does anyone have anything to add regarding the committee you are on or would like to share with us?
Uh, just been meeting, uh, doing the best I can with buildings and grounds, trying to keep everything going as smoothly as possible. Um, certainly looking forward to having a superintendent in place. Need to, uh, everything is, goes as, uh, planned today. Um, I'm supposed to meet Friday afternoon with Tremco, uh, back up on the roof to go over what they're gonna do so I can, uh, negotiate a final, uh, estimate and get the paperwork drawn up and get on your schedule to get done. Um, do that week fix, you know, before it whether it turns bad on us. Um, other than that, um, gonna sit down with the, uh, the new superintendent when he comes in and, uh, try to help getting him on board and, uh, just got a few small things that we gotta get straight around for winter and, um, I should take care of that. Um, the Parks and Rec did meet two weeks ago, I believe it was. Um, we had a presentation from Phil Hathaway, um, who's working on our master plan. Um, you didn't know that it's probably too late to try to, um, receive any grants for this upcoming fiscal year 2016, but, um, that we should hopefully have everything in place and maybe we can get some grants for our parks, um, by fiscal, uh, 2017. Um, we're gonna, usually we're done for the year with our Parks and Rec meeting, but we're gonna hold an additional meeting in November. Um, we're trying, I'm trying to get it, um, out to Chiawassee Township Hall and we're going to, uh, showcase Chi Town parks. Uh, and we're gonna try to, every month until we've hit every park, try to get the, uh, township and, uh, involved and, um, some of the public involved into the, uh, township and the area where we're at. So like Henderson Park would be Rush Township next year or something, but, um, trying to get more people involved and just try to get more volunteers and people, uh, interested in the parks so that maybe start doing a little more, uh, better work to take in care of them, um, with a limited budget being allowed.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to the public hearing on the 2016 budget. Open to go. Anybody have anything to add regarding the 2016 fiscal year budget? Hearing nothing, we will oppose the public hearing portion of the 2016 budget. We'll move to the committee of the whole. Commissioner Root?
Not here.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind resolution number 15 dash 09 dash 18, passed at the September 17th, 2015, Board of Commissioners.
I'll support that and I'd just like to, uh, reiterate what that is and what that's doing.
So this is the rescinding, uh, what we passed, um, last month. It's the resolution 150918 which authorized us to join and participate in the White House mapping grant, uh, dollars for, uh, equalization of grain commission and public safety. It would have cost us around $38,000 if we were all gonna collaborate and partner out and partner with, uh, these other departments. So real great idea for cross-county communication and partnership, uh, but we received word that, uh, we will be receiving this for free due to FEMA floodplain mapping. We're one of six, uh, six counties total and we went through Endar to make sure it was the exact same thing so that we weren't, um, missing out on anything and, you know, being hoodwinked if you will, but, uh, this is a great, great deal for us and will help our local assessors, it will help just about everyone. So, um, this is a good deal and this is what, uh, what this would rescind.
Tony, do you have anything to add?
No, that's my water.
So it would be, uh, it would be fairly, uh, I don't know if it's a good word, but senseless for us not to rescind this and move forward this, uh, with the White House mapping, um, we're gonna have one foot increments and it's, it's just gonna save the county a lot of money and, uh, a lot of people, a lot of different entities a lot of money down the road, correct Tony?
Right, and, uh, Jim Johnson from the USDA did email me again yesterday and he checked in again and everything is the same. So it can be the same information that we would've got if we would've participated in the grant, so.
One other advantage of this is it will be happening as soon as the weeds fall off the ground, uh, during the spring when the last one is. And as we're going through our parks master plan, this is gonna be such a wonderful help to them as we partner with the local communities, municipalities to piece this together, so another positive.
No further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oop, I'll, I'll do a roll call, both actually.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2015 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Support. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, last month is, as I, uh, brought up the subject that we had three millages put into one motion. I objected to it then and I had to split my vote and I would appreciate if you would pay attention.
I appreciate your comments.
And I'm not finished.
Okay.
Two of, uh, the, uh, four minutes in there, there's millages I agreed with and I voted positive and yes on. The third one was a millage for the veterans, uh, and I did not agree with it because I haven't seen any documentation, so I voted no. There was a discussion and it was about that at that time, but you accepted my vote at that time. After the fact, my, when the minutes came out, it's, uh, erroneously read that I voted no for all three, uh, millages.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but we're approving the minutes from last, last Wednesday, October 14th to not September's, um, meeting. We will note then on the record that you, uh, disagree with, with what happened. I will say that it was one motion, it wasn't split up, so both of us are known vote based on that motion.
And the motion was that was discussed and it was improper that put three millages on one vote.
Okay, we'll also note that.
And the fact that my vote was changed, which nobody has the authority to do.
I believe we're looking at Robert's rules, if you vote yes, yes, no on anything it refers to the no because you, I don't recall the, the exact wording, but we did look it up, it basically nullifies your own vote. But, again, these are the minutes from my Wednesday, October 14th at 4:00 PM. Does anyone have any problem with these? They should be in front of you. We will mark that on the record for you and we will move forward to, all of, in favor of approving the October 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
No.
Thank you. We'll move to Economic and Physical Development, Commissioner Horvath.
Thank you. I move to accept and place on file, which is how 15 grain assistance as provided by Chiawassee County Dream Office.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
I move to approve ordinance number 151003, amending the official zoning district map of Chiawassee County, uh, County of Chiawassee, Michigan, Article 2, Section 2, Point 1, Point 2 of the Chiawassee County zoning ordinance by changing the zoning designation parcel number 7801022300, 00504 from A2 agricultural production rural residential to M1 light industrial.
Support. Motion in the second, any discussion? Did you have any discussion on this, uh, pretty well last week? Any to add?
Um, this has, this has been a hard one for me. Um, I know my district is really not for it. I just hope that our, that the county or zoning keep pressing and, uh, all of us really keep track of this, keep track of what's going on and do not let it get out of hand. Um, I think either way that we vote is gonna set up precedence and, uh, you know, we're gonna have to deal with the outcome of what happens in the future, um, because of what we're doing today.
Any further? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2015 Economic and Physical Development Committee meeting.
Support. Any discussion? All of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
Chairman, that concludes our report.
Thank you, sir. County financed administration. Commissioner Schneider?
Move to approve the District Courts and Health Roofing Proposal from Tremco Roofing Inc., not to exceed up to $16,000 and authorize board chair to sign same calendar.
Support. Any discussion on this?
Think I just gave an update, um, but I am supposed to meet, uh, Friday afternoon if the other commissioner that would like, I don't know if we have three of us, but if somebody else would like to be there, um, that would be fine. I don't even know the exact time. I think 1:30, but it's not, it's only, uh, I'm just anxious to move this forward and, uh, get that real fixed.
Any further? Nothing further, Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Move to approve Tim Hill as a Buildings and Ground Superintendent at a pay grade Level 8, uh, starting on the right scale.
Support. Any discussion? I like this, I'll, I'll say I think this is a higher 30 years experience, uh, an odd moment with the lack of forum last week. Tim was, uh, kinda in limbo and his boss told him that he's leaving via, via the paper. One of the, uh, downsides of, of that lack of forum, but, um, he's excited to come on board, he's excited to work and, and I think, uh, this'll help us out a lot, so. Nothing further? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the 2016 budget and resolution number 15 dash 10 dash 20.
Support. Any discussion? I think this is a good budget. Obviously, we're doing it much earlier, so it does allow us some leeway, uh, if November, December hit, uh, dollars amounts could change as far as revenue. I think this is exciting, I think this is responsible. I commend everyone who, uh, took part. Nothing further? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the Health Department to hire a Director of Personnel in Community Health to refill a vacancy due to a resignation at pay grade 12 on a rising salary schedule with a salary range of $53,711 to $65,710.
Support. Any discussion? Nothing further? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the Health Department to hire a Public Health Nurse 2 to refill a vacancy at SEIU nurse salary range of 50, I mean, $42,545.34 to $52,365.20.
Support. Any discussion? If nothing further, Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the Register of Deeds to contract the V S N A software for electronic export in the amount of $6,000 to be paid from the Register of Deeds Automation Fund line item 256 dash 268 dash 970 decimal 000 and authorize board chair to sign same.
Support. Any discussion on this? I just note that this comes out of, uh, a different phone than the general one. Every deed, okay, except we five dollars to this or, or, five?
Sorry.
Five dollars and that's where the funding would be coming out of, so. If nothing further, Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the grant agreement between the Michigan Department of Community Health and the Chiawassee County Prosecutor's Office for victim rights for the period of October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016, in the amount of $80,691 and authorize a prosecutor to sign same.
Support. Any discussion? Nothing further, Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Eighth Amendment to the prisoner reentry residential stability contract between Genesee County and Chiawassee County for the period of October 1, 2015, through September 30, 2016, for a maximum amount of $72,400 and authorize board chair to sign same.
Support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Technical Services Contract between the Chiawassee Regional Education Service District, R S R E S D, and Chiawassee County for the period of October 1, 2015, through June 30, 2017, in the amount of $96,350 per year and authorize board chair to sign same.
Support. Any discussion?
Just one, a financial aspect of this, um, tentatively, we were looking at spending $116,000, $117,000 on those positions and this is a $20,000, $21,000, $22,000 savings by moving it this way. So that's pretty.
Everybody said, did we get Mr. Garmao?
Mr. Garmao in the lean access?
Yeah, did we get that?
So we're still working on it. Liz is calling back, I call her every day. The gentleman normally handles it, uh, referring me to her as far as policy and procedures. The tricky part about this is the state doesn't have anyone in that position currently to train people if they need to be on lean, but I believe, uh, Mr. Gummer and I spoke Thursday, he believes there's a window once you have it, it lasts six months. You have to get trained once you start, uh, so we do have some time, we're working on it. Um, just got a text message this morning from, uh, Royce Humm who handles the IT and I haven't called him back, it just came at 3:02 actually. Uh, they have a solution to help improve our internet reliability and, and bring and create our security of the county network. It's a thing they're working on as of today at 3:02, so. It just, the hits just keep coming, that's just positive. Heard a couple messages last, uh, two days ago, a ticket that had been open for all six months, it's completely, one that's open for 12 months, it's been completely, and there's a tracking process. Um, thus far, it's very positive and it will be a learning curve and, um, I look forward to this.
I'm asking that question, you know, even about 1,200 miles away, I am reading your emails. You caught me off guard, I am reading all your emails.
Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the, uh, S R E S D Technology Support Services Agreement for the period of October 1, 2015, through November 19, 2015, in the amount of $12,750 and authorize board chair to sign same.
Support. Any discussion?
That will be adjusted.
I will, this will be appropriated and, uh, since we approved the, the June 30, 2017, it's really unnecessary to approve this, uh, that price will change due to us making the wrong decision, so. Madam Clerk, roll call both please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Burks?
Yes.
Mr. Plomin?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Allie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2015, by this administrative committee meeting.
Support. Any discussion? Any discrepancies, Tom? If nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
I just, one thing, I think we have other still on finance. Um, just Commissioner Schneider, why, why would you not approve the 2016 budget? Being that Commissioner Root is the chairman and you're the vice chairman, um, and neither of you put, have one ounce of energy or did one single thing to put this budget together, how can you, uh, not have it approved?
Is that a question or a recommendation?
That's a question.
Uh, because, uh, Commissioner Root and I were not, uh, part of anything to do with the-
You're, you're the chairman and vice chairman.
And vice chair. We were not included in any of the meetings or any of the briefing. How can we agree with something that we, uh, truly don't know much about?
You were a fact two in charge and we're supposed to be having meetings.
All right, we'll move along. All I'll say on that is, uh, I did have budget, public financing budgeting this summer for class and this is one of my class projects, so I didn't mind doing this work. I got four points back, but who cares? Uh, that being said, we've had this budget for a month to do, to approve this, to review this, to find discrepancies, to find something you didn't prepare for, something you liked, solutions to this budget and, uh, I received nothing, so I find that odd, um, that means it's funny that you don't have time to look at this, you've had a month and an extra week even. So that, that's, that's unfortunate, but I appreciate, again, the critique and we'll move to you as well on public safety and courts.
And before it's all over, that, um, our board chair is aware that I do have some, uh, valid questions and, uh, explanations as to how some of this budget and, um, basically it is, uh, now is not the time to discuss it.
We've had the last five weeks to discuss it. So-
I tend to throw me under the bus now as, uh-
Well, I'm just asking, why, you didn't answer my question, is why do you would disapprove? You're saying that you didn't have time to study that, but the fact, the chairman just said that you had four, actually five weeks, uh, and if you had questions, you could've brought them forward at any time and either you or the chairman of the Finance Committee has did either.
I did bring it up to the chair.
You brought up fiscal years 13, uh, 12, 13, and 14, nothing on 16. Anything in 16 that you can, you wanna go through? I mean, we, we passed it, I mean, but, again, this is just- I don't know if you, you passed it, I mean, but, again, this is just past, we still have a couple of months to adjust, so, um, let me know if you find something in this budget, not in past budgets, I, I can't speak to those. Uh, but, let's move along with public safety, of course, I appreciate this comment, gentlemen.
Public Safety and Court have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Health and Human Services.
Make a motion to approve recognizing, honoring, and enforcing the Uni- the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, U.S.E.R.R.A., and authorize board chair to sign a statement of support for the Gardener's-
Support.
Any discussion? I gave a, there's a decent break down there. If there's nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same?
Motion to approve Amendment Four to the Comprehensive Planning, Budgeting, and Contracting CPBC Agreement with the State of Michigan in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars for the period of October first, 2014 through September thirtieth, 2015, and authorize Larry Johnson, Health Director, to sign the same.
Support.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will call, all vote please.
Commissioner Burks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Horga?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agreement between the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in Shawasi County for the delivery of public health services under the comprehensive agreement in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the period of October first, 2015 through September thirtieth, 2016, and authorize Larry Johnson, Health Director, to sign the same.
Support.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will call, all vote please.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Burks?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Burks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Motion to approve the independent contract agreement with the Shawasi Regional Education Service District for hearing and vision screening of children aged zero to five in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the period of October first, 2015 through September thirtieth, 2016, and authorize Larry Johnson, Health Director, to sign the same.
Support.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will call, all vote please.
Commissioner Horga?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Burks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October thirteenth, 2015 Health and Human Services Committee meeting.
Support.
Any discussion or discrepancies found? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same? You guys have it. I will move, uh, a few things to add, uh, on your, you guys have probably maybe you would found a, uh, Shawas County Board of Appeals to Wood Hall Township Planning Commission that will be on next month's agenda, if you'd like to look over that for the next month, please, and review, as I repeat, we'll have something to say, as well as, uh, members from Wood Hall Township, uh, something to be aware of and to take home. Uh, secondly, Larry Johnson, this week on there's a cleanup, I believe?
Yes.
Would you like to speak on that, please?
Um, health and hazardous waste collection, Saturday, this coming Saturday, a Chippewa Trail behind BG's grocery store from eight AM to noon, so free to all of our residents, um, and we've gotten a lot of interest on it this week, so we anticipate it's going to be a busy collection, um, we're going to keep it open from eight till noon, so if you, if you spread the word and have some clean out your garages and basements, we'd like to see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Before going to the, uh, to publicly address the board, I'd just like to speak with the tenants for, you know, this isn't, I'm not here to blast people, although I think I did a pretty good job last week, and I apologize for the tone, maybe it came off, but it's definitely, definitely necessary, the first time over forty years that we're in a forum, you know, I, I think, as a county board, not only do we have a revenue problem, but sometimes we have a credibility problem, and it's on us to do the job that we elected to do, we signed up for this, and, you know, it's not a who has it worst competition, I will say, you know, I lost two uncles and a grandma this year, and I haven't missed them either, I have been ill, I've come, um, I've had friends that are sick, I know people try, um, I appreciate if you're not going to be here, or no three weeks in a way and say you're not going to be here, a phone call before three fifty-six PM, um, if you're ill, sometimes that happens, I get it, but when we're normally all here by three fifteen, you know by three thirty if you're not coming. It's a text, it's an email, it's a call, if you, if you don't care for something I did, let another commissioner know, call Julie, um, we can do this, we're, we're adults, but, uh, we did sign up for this, and, uh, I get emergencies will happen, things happen, life happens, but, um, that was a sad day for the state, the county, and this budget being passed, hopefully the people will see we're still doing our job, we're still responsible, we're still, um, our, our greatest responsibility here is our, our financial duties to the budget, and, uh, we got to be here to do this stuff, so, I thank you for your attendance today, and, uh, with that, I'll move. Commissioner Burks?
I know you don't want to hear that, I commend you for, uh, they actually took last week, and, um, I, I, I don't care for public record, I think, uh, Commissioner Root needs to be put on notice, um, he's sick, he's, he works, he's got all these other things to do all the time, um, he's signed up for this job, he misses, constantly misses, um, misses MTA, misses subcommittee meetings, misses, uh, township meetings, um, why did he sign up for the job if he's not going to come, and, uh, I just think he needs to be put on notice?
Commissioner Root's been in, normally, like, when it comes to here, he's in great communication about Lehman, he cannot be here, but he's trying to get out of it, as per the MTA, we have made changes, so Mr. Plomin will not have to come us there, uh, so that's no longer an issue, uh, I thank you for your comments today, and I appreciate it, uh, opportunity for the public to address the board, second call.
Yes, sir, um, I'd like to address the board.
Can you fill out a card, just to know who you are, where you're from, please, sir? You can do that if you want.
Well, I'm here about, it's, I'm, I'm complaining about, my neighbors have, uh, have a pole barn behind their property, and they turned it into a construction business, and they're running a construction business now, that, uh, I'm just saying, their, uh, land is, it's owned, A2 district, agricultural productive rural residential, and, uh, Mr. Washington went out on, uh, June eighth and August twenty-sixth, and here are some of the things that he found, A2, and it is fourteen foot by forty-five foot, it's a construction on the south side of a resisting six thousand square foot, had a pole barn building, and two and a half hour, tire ride, it's attached to a freeway, it's a simple residential structure, and it's a top mist or trade inspection, approximately fifteen foot by twenty-six foot, separate building, which built off it, permit or trade inspection, and approximately three hundred square foot unattached structure used for a sauna, with a sharp outer, had it top mist or trade inspection, as well, so also, and then my main place is based upon violations, based on, based upon our inspection and other sources of information, three D construction is consistently operating from this location, deployed to be meeting and living out this location with equipment necessary to perform heavy or general contract work at various job locations, this type of use is not permitted under an A2 zone district agricultural rural residential. Now, these people out here built this barn, and they got to commit to this agricultural business, and ever since they've done that, because I've complained with them, harassing me.
Do you have your address, sir?
My house is fourteen, eight, two, nine-
Where's theirs?
Barn Road, it's four, yeah, I got, matter of fact, there's fourteen, eight, oh, one, Barn Road, and here is where they're advertising their business on the internet.
North, South, Barn Road.
Yeah, South Barn Road, Burns Township.
Thank you.
And these people are harassing me, they, they'll start, they'll, they'll start six thirty in the morning, and do things like they'll turn the radio on, and they'll turn it on in full blast, ear straight, and then they take off, and leave the radio on, on all day, they'll come home, they'll, they'll come back at one twelve noon, they'll have lunch, they take off again, then leave the red radio on till six thirty in the afternoon, just ear straight, you can't go out in your yard, you can't go out in your yard, and then they'll take about two days off, and then they'll turn the radio on, and they'll play from six thirty PM in the afternoon till six thirty in the morning, nonstop, and when I call, like, I call, like, uh, nine one one, I say, look, I got a complaint because these people are doing this, and they tell me, well, they don't have a nor, they don't have a noise or it's a burn township, there's nothing they can do, and I'm saying, yeah, but you don't understand, those people aren't out there, you're not out there listening, you, you tell them, why don't you go over there and tell them to turn, turn it off? I said, I can't go over there and tell them to turn it off, because they're not there, you know, you can't tell, you know, what I'm, what I'm going to do, drive to Babros and see where they're at, you know, they're not there, you know, and, and, uh, they have threatened my wife, you know?
Your wife or your wife?
My wife. They have, they have, they have threatened her, they have, uh, they, 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 every kind of, I'm not just saying, I'm in the world, we've been out there, I, I can't say something, you know, you kind of get the drift, you know, and, and, uh, but we can't get any peace, we can't, you know, like, the summertime, my daughter, who lives in Flint, will not bring grandkids down to visit their grandmother because the noise out there in that back, backyard is so horrible, they can't play, I got a hot tub back there, and I haven't been in, I'll start one, because all I listen to is country western music coming out of this pole barn with nobody in it, you know, and, and you can't, it's absolutely nothing I can do about it, I did buy a house off the rural countryside to listen most, you know, and it's just nonstop, you know, they come in the morning, you know, and, and they'll sit there, and they turn on the dump trucks, and we have to let them warm up for the high lights, and the dump trucks run, and then they have to load the equipment on the, on the trailers, and, you know, and they get the beep, 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 when they're backing up, when they're trying to back up that, you know, and then they slam bang, you know, and they laugh, and they, they're having a good time, and I can't, you know, I can't even open up the windows.
Have you discussed any of this with Shawasi County zoning?
Yeah, Mr. President, yeah, this is the report, this is the report, yeah, and now, because, because of what I have done, now I'm going to get punched, so they went down there and they found, filed for another, uh, ordinance to build another pole barn, thirty by seventy, and they got to put it right on the backyard concrete, and I ain't even going to put picks in it, well, you know, who cares, I mean, but at this point, I'm, I'm pretty used to picks, because I've just lived with them, you know, ever since they put up this pole barn, and this was supposed to be then a, a agriculture endeavor, and they started running a construction business, and you talk, you talk about what they're doing out there in your area, they, they can't trust us, they're not going to keep it, these people are, have just, you know, just made our lives miserable, you know, I'm about sixty-four years old, she's got a little dog that's riding, she can't have a walk, you know, and then she put up the stress about this stuff, you know?
I appreciate that, can we, can we get a copy of that, uh, report, if you don't mind?
Yeah, that's all right, yeah, you can get a copy of it.
What I'll say about the nuisance has been, uh, referred to the prosecutor, it's difficult to define and enforce when there's no ordinance, um-
Yeah, but-
Normally, you need a document, how they would be, I don't know, interfering on his personal use of enjoyment, talk to a lawyer, it becomes a simple matter, I believe.
Yeah, but, yeah, those, these people, and I'm going to take them to court.
Oh, that, that might mean they're glad.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I'd say I'll, I, I, I don't know, you know, the lawyers and all, I don't know.
That's one way to handle the nuisance, as far as the report, uh, from Pete, we'll have to look into that, I, I don't know what he said about it.
You know, say, please, we'll come out here, you know, we'll put you on a priority, the priority means people, you know?
And it is simple, that's normally, you know, you would document all the aspects of your personal use and enjoyment of your property.
Yeah, you gave off, you gave off the other.
I would refer to a lawyer for that one, I appreciate your time today, if you don't mind filling that card out.
No, I'll, you know, I'll be back too, because it's not stopping up, this has been going on for a year and a half.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Yep.
If nothing further, please consider this meeting adjourned.